We do have color printer out there.
Do we really?
Mm-hmm. You just gotta go in and the printer and hit the...
Oh, I didn't know that.
300 XD or something.
Well, hell, I can give you each copy of it now.
Huh? Yeah, you mailed them. Tell them get this damn thing working. Well, we've been messing with this thing for five years.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm just frustrated with it. I'm not jumping your case. Sorry about that. I just... This projector, we had to bring public works up here. He brings his own for our commissioning, so... Who else are we supposed to call? Isn't that an IT thing? Or not? Okay.
That's not an IT thing.
So where'd our printer go?
Did you guys try to plug into this?
Yeah, we couldn't get it.
I know, that's what we was trying to smoo- that's why I just did... And every time we have commission meeting, uh, plane commission meeting, Shane's gotta bring his own up. Shouldn't have to do that.
Show me which one is. This one, color laser 3000?
Yep, 3000.
Where's that at?
Right there by Melody.
Okay.
That's that big tall ones. So, yeah, if you need something with color, then you can...
You can always throw that out at him.
Perfect.
He's staring at me over there.
Let's get through this first.
It's not the first thing to come in messing with is that projector. It sets me off.
This thing, you're gonna plug it into your computer. And this should work.
And Debbie's had problems.
I know. We've... We'll do it at some other time, not while we're getting everybody in.
Yeah, and Chelsea just... So you don't feel bad? It has been a dog since the day we built, we started it.
Well, he said he doesn't know anything about, so...
Well, I'm putting it on our IT guy to find out, make it schoolproof.
Yeah, and they... They have a great program called Huber Advantage that they would love to share with us.
I don't think they put it in.
That's all right. You know, I bet you could come and reface my cabinets even though you didn't put them in.
All right.
You guys all ready?
For any, for a price, I can do anything.
Amen.
We're gonna call a commission order, since we're on a relatively tight timeframe day. Uh, the first item on the agenda is countywide zoning. And I'm gonna get that done real quick. This is the resolution to put it on the August ballot, which I think we've already all discussed and agreed to. So I would entertain a motion to approve a resolution seeking to submit to the voters of the county the issue of whether Cole County should adopt zoning.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. By roll, call, vote. Motion's approved. Resolution's approved. Battle will be sent to the ballot in August. All right. Next item is 2014-19 inmate welfare products. Jan, you wanna do that real quick?
Yeah, can I just stay here? Is that okay, or should I?
You have to have a microphone. You can stand and walk around and talk.
Can't hide behind the pole.
Well, you can. But it doesn't go very well when that happens.
Um, overall, the sheriff's department and I have determined that Bob Barker is the lowest and best bid. Um, they bid every item save a couple of the extreme sizes.
Is it?
Not this Bob Barker.
That's all I have to say about that. Did you catch all that? Bob Barker, lowest and best.
From North Carolina?
From Fuquay Varina, North Carolina, yeah.
You guys have been using him in the past, haven't you?
We have some, yeah. It, when you go through it, item by item that we want, they come up with, with a lower number.
So on this bid tab, where it shows like just hash lines through?
That's the same price. Some of, yeah, some of them had different price per size. Some didn't.
It wasn't working?
Yeah, it's not on yours.
Okay. Any questions? I entertain a motion to approve the staff recommendation to award it to Bob Barker.
Second.
Motion's second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right. Come on down.
He's actually a fraternity brother of yours?
The real Bob Barker is actually a fraternity brother.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's it.
They all wanted to go on the, uh, everybody when you're in college wanted to go on, uh, the Price Rights, you could say. Brother Bob. Inmate food services.
Okay, and this one is a sliding scale per meal, and so there is no bottom line. Um, you can play, you can manipulate the numbers in the population to look at it. Overall, ABL management is very competitive. Some scenarios, they're lowest or always right there. Um, they're the current service, and as far as I know, the sheriff's department's happy with their service. And then if you get anyone else in there, you're gonna have growing pains.
How many meals do you serve generally in a day? What's the population right now, Victor?
We're serving about 400 meals a day.
Divided by three?
Well, that includes like snacks and things. We're at about, our population level in the housing product's around 115. Huber take a little bit, uh, up in booking, but remember, we also feed people that are in custody for a short period of time that happen to be there at noon time. So, we're serving more than a house.
What's our general low number?
Our general low number? Um, the lowest we've been lately for, uh, on the board, we've been around 110.
Okay.
Particular day, at a particular time. Our high number's been around 115. Now, that's at any one time.
Okay.
Victor, which, which one of them was bringing, was bringing in frozen food and warming it?
The, the, the one that looks like it could be the lowest bid.
CBM managed services?
Yeah, they, they basically look like they prepare all their food outside, freeze it, ship it in, and basically the kitchen to serve it. Um, I also had a concern with them, because when we asked for references, they gave us five references throughout the state. And as I was going to research and do a check of references, I found out they had five or six people or companies in, or agencies in Missouri that they service. And I couldn't fathom why they would not give us Missouri agencies as references. So, I was real questionable about that. Um, and then like I said, I was concerned about their food quality. If they're freezing it, it's basically a glorified frozen dinner. If you're shipping it in, you eat it up and serve it. Uh, versus ABL, that's actually cooking decent meals for these people.
One of my concerns would be is if we switch vendors to, are we gonna have other, uh, grease trap issues that we hopefully put to bed, so?
We, we just, we felt that the, the difference was, was really close. And, and because ABL's here, we know what they are, and honestly, we're extremely satisfied with them. We met with the regional director and just ensured that the same quality would be continuing if not approved. He was very responsive to us as well.
Your projected spend chart?
Annual, yeah.
I don't understand that it doesn't have all the entities.
All the entities.
It's got ABL, CCF, which is correction, Consolidated Correctional Food Service. It has Aramark, it has CP. I'm not sure what CP is.
Aramark.
I'm just looking at the second tab on the...
Oh, that's, I probably, let me see what you're looking at. I don't think that's from this year, and I may have just started the same.
Yeah, Aramark didn't bid this time.
Yeah, that's not...
That's not this year's analysis?
No.
Okay.
Is there the first?
There's the first page. And there's the second sheet.
Go to the first one real quick and scroll down. Let me make sure that that's... No.
Okay.
So the recommendation is to keep ABL management?
Yes.
And you're right, depending on how you calculate what the number in the population is, it's more expensive, it's less expensive, it's kinda, there's no way to know. Well, that's, that's page one. It's an Excel spreadsheet. It's got a second tab.
Second tab, disregard, yes. Okay.
There's the downside to sending those things. We see those things.
That was from three years ago.
Okay.
The second tab.
I move that we award it to ABL management.
A motion's second to award to ABL management. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have a contract?
Oh.
So...
Then I entertain a, uh, motion to approve the contract with it, uh, ABL management.
So moved.
A motion's second. Call the roll, please, Miss Betty.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Chris?
Yes.
And Mark.
Yes. By a roll, call, vote. The contract is approved. Just one?
Yeah, and then I have...
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help on that. All right, Greg, I think you're up now.
Interpol came to us with a crime mapping solution. Crime mapping is something that we've been working towards. It was supposed to have had with the new world, but didn't truly materialize for us, um, since I've been in office. What it does is twofold. There's one side of it that's a public venue that you can download an app to your phone, uh, and it shows, it shows where crimes occur and what the crimes are. You can look at density, but the, the law enforcement side of the non-public side, in addition to everything else, gives us predictors. We, you put in, you, you put in the MOs with the type of crime, and it will predict to you where additional ones, where the, where the next set should come, or within reasonable parameters. So it helps us in using the resources we have to interdict crime potentially before it occurs. We've, and, and what we're gonna do is have Rodney Beasley with Interpol, and Joe, who's online, show you the online application.
It's not in much stretch, however. Maybe it don't.
All right, I put on speaker now. I just didn't want to put on my...
Please enter your access code, followed by a pound or hash sign.
One, two, three, four.
Okay, just hung up, so I'll try that again.
Thank you.
Overall, you guys have been happy with switching back to Interpol?
Oh, my, yes. You know, it was, we were trying to be cooperative with the city, and it was a mistake on our part.
We will avoid quoting you on that, Greg.
As far as records management system goes.
Oh, thank you.
The access code you entered is invalid. You enter...
John, just throw yours in.
Give a copy of this to, uh, city council members on a Monday night.
I know he's gonna PowerPoint. He's already, he's gonna send it to PowerPoint. So they're gonna throw them off on the screen and actually work.
Of course, they got everything on iPads too, so... Dude, this wasn't me. This...
Where is?
Uh, went down. I, I have no idea. You may have to do it without.
What are we doing here?
Just dial the number, get him online, and then, or get whoever's gonna answer.
We just tried to do it on the phone, huh? That time it wasn't my fault.
There's a Huber Advantage program that'll make this work.
See, this wasn't me. The phone system, a great, great phone system.
Did you get this? It's interesting reading, though, really.
Is it? Sure.
Flutter waste processing?
Is that through, uh, solid waste district?
This is the first one I got.
Is that through the solid waste district?
I don't know what, where it came from. That's the first one I got. I thought I'd thumb through it before I threw it away.
What are we doing here?
Trying to get this going. The phone system's not working. Trying to let surprise you.
It's an IT issue. It's a code issue.
Enter your account code.
You got it?
Keep going.
Ten minutes, I said.
Well, we haven't started yet.
Oh, no, 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 no. The clock started the second I said you're up, Greg.
I, I have no idea.
Is that a conference call number that we're supposed to be dialing into?
Yeah, but it's not letting me dial it on just the phone call.
You'll go with what you got.
No, no, that's second one is, are you trying to dial into a conference call line? That second one that they're asking for is your conference call pin.
Yeah, that's that one.
Putting it in.
Because you're getting through it, no question, because I can hear it.
Right, but then when you punch in, you gotta dial the conference code number in the pound sign.
Yeah.
Hit the pound sign, it transfers it to a different number.
So let's, uh...
What is it again? One...
You gotta dial something besides a one, don't you?
All right, me, I don't do conference calls.
I don't do long-distance calls. We got cell phones for it. Do it on a cellphone, but on speakerphone.
He just tried.
Oh, it's not working either?
That was suggested five minutes ago.
When you get rid of landlines? What's wrong with America?
Tony E. M.P. hits.
That and windmills. Windmills are causing turbulence and sucking the energy right out of the wind.
It's an invalid access card.
Don Quixote had the right idea, attacking the windmills.
What about, um, the Cowboys not picking up a quarterback?
Oh, that's been a problem for 15 years. I don't know if that's gonna be fixed anytime soon.
Show what you can show. Let me just suspend both the demo, and I'll do a little talking for you. You read it?
I don't know what the hell, it's, it's dialing extra, whoops, I'm sorry. It's dialing extra numbers. If you listen to what the... You end the code, you type the code in, so I typed 400148, and it says you entered 4000...
Oh, really?
1488839. That ain't the right number. I don't know what's going on.
Sure it wasn't.
All right.
So if you guys would be open up this, uh, here, I got for you. And again, thanks for your time. Basically, what we have here is we're doing some work with Cole County here to help them with their crime mapping and analytics. Interpol, obviously, is the representation system here.
Interpol, we partner with people that do things well. We believe this Bear Analytics team here does things very well as far as crime mapping. We do not have crime mapping inside of our system itself, so we believe this is a great way to go. Now, these Bear folks came to us a few months ago to, um, because they had a customer of ours that wanted to use this product. The customer bought the product, they loved it, and they came to us and said, hey, let's have an interface so we can map all of the, the cases and the, uh, reports that are going on throughout the, their jurisdiction. So we wrote an interface for them. It's currently in Newton, Kansas, and that company, or that agency is currently going through the process of getting their data online. So what this company here, Bear Analytics, offers is two things. They have this thing called Raids Online, which is that first sheet you see here. Raids Online is an entirely free product. We can take all of the occurrences in our RMS, send these to the Bear folks, and they have a public website, which you can go to right now, raidsonline.com. It's totally free. What they do is offer that kind of as a little catch, really, to go on with you. The second level here is this Attack Raids product. The Attack Raids offers analytics to the department. So these folks can do things like heat maps, you know, where, where is crime occurring? Uh, predicting the times of day, uh, days of the week, when, when is, when is staffing required? And also predicting types of crime, and as things are occurring, and as they change their workforce, you, you can see those things flow through time and, and predict where crime's going to occur. We did a demo with these folks a couple weeks ago, or I guess it was last week. And I know that, uh, John and the sheriff were very impressed with what they saw. Sorry, I can't show you a demo, but the product...
Why can't you do a demo?
Well, the, the guy that is online here with us has the access to the tools. This is a brand-new partnership with us. We came to Cole County because...
Can you just call us? We have a phone number here. I mean, you can just dial us and talk. Sorry, I don't mean to...
Make sure your phone's right.
Just cut to the chase, Marty.
What's the number?
It's, uh, 573-634-9108.
Is that direct here?
That's direct to this phone. Okay.
This, 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 the whole concept of what we're doing, not necessarily this company, but the whole concept started on the East Coast in New York City and Washington, D.C. And obviously, they have lots of people on their staff, but they also have a lot, a greater popul, you know, percentage-wise, greater population, a landmass, all of that. And it was so good for them that their predictors, in, in matching it with staffing, significantly reduced their crime issues.
Did it also reduce the amount of staff that they would... I mean, to me, it seems like it'd almost be a labor savings as well. I mean, it almost could be. I mean, I'm not saying it...
It's force magnifier in the sense, if you've got five people on at this time, and you've got three people on at this time, and you really need to switch that?
Mm-hmm.
That, that's where it comes in. I mean, we still have to have a minimum staffing to cover calls in the county. But you still, but, but the ability to predict the serious crime is what's huge in it.
It's so different with, uh, for MoDOT, whenever they give us a grant for the DWI saturation...
Hey, we're trying to get somebody to call in. We need to get it on.
Oh, I think we transferred the number out of here, so that it didn't ring always in sessions.
Is this something that...
Didn't know that.
We'd be able to put on GIS as well, or maybe a link, or...
So I'm trying one of their online site. I'm on their online site. There's noth, I picked a county. It said Georgia Walker County. There's no data.
Put in Columbia, Missouri.
Hello?
Hello, it's Joe Ryan, Bear Analytics. How are you?
There we go. All right, thanks, Joe, for, we had a little problems with the conference call number, but, uh, what we'd like to do, Joe, we burned some time here, so all these guys, and time is important. So if we could go right into the demo of the, um, the Raids Online and, of course, Attack Raids, and show the guys how this works.
Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, so, I'm gonna talk to you about the two solutions we offer, Raids Online and Attack Raids. And Raids Online is really a tool to, for the sheriff's department to communicate crime information to the public to assist in fighting crime. And so, um, I'll just jump right in and show you. If you look at this map of the United States, you'll see as I click on different states, there's a number of participating agencies already. Um, so I'll go ahead and go someplace kinda close to you, and we'll go into Columbia, Missouri. And this is what the interface is gonna look like. It's gonna have crime information here. And so if I click on a point, you can see some basic information about the crime, including the hundred block, so it's not gonna go ahead and, uh, violate anybody's privacy. Um, we also offer the ability to turn different types of crime on and off over here on the sidebar, as well as change the date range. And so a date range can be selected that fits you. Um, as well as the ability to do a density map. So you can look at those points and try to determine where the most dense area of crime is. Also, we offer some basic, uh, data in our table, so you can view it in a data grid, and you can see everything that's on the map will be displayed in this particular grid. And you can filter this grid. So if you had like a street that you're interested in, like Ruby Lane, you could just type in Ruby for a filter, and it's gonna filter that data down to just events that occurred on Ruby Lane. I'm gonna go ahead and clear that, and then I'll take you to our analytics tab, which is gonna give four basic analytics to citizens to let them know the time of day and day of week the crimes are occurring, a timeline of those crimes, and a breakdown of those crimes by type. So it's gonna give them a lot of good information that they can use, um, in helping to prevent crime and also notifying the department, the sheriff's department of any suspicious activity about, that they've noticed where these crimes are occurring. Likewise, they can go and set up crime alerts, so if they don't wanna log into the system every day, the system can come to them. They can type in their name, their information, their email address, and a location, and a distance, and they can be notified on a regular basis of the crimes they're interested in within a certain distance of that address that they specified. Um, what I generally say is you're gonna be a victim of crime where you live, where you work, or where you frequent, and there's nothing that would preclude a citizen from putting, putting multiple addresses in here to make sure that they're safe in all the places that they would frequent. Um, likewise, we have an iPhone app. We also have an Android app. We haven't added the button yet, um, but it's available in the Google Play Store as well as the iPhone App Store. And it's a native app to the device, and so, like, I, uh, once I get an app on my phone, I tend to use my app more than I use a website. So you'll find a lot of citizens will probably use that iPhone or Android native app just as frequently as they use this website. So this is really the Raids Online tool, and it's a tool for citizens to stay informed of what's happening. Uh, if they notice auto burglaries in their neighborhood, um, hopefully, they'll take the necessary precautions to lock their doors and to take their valuables out of their car. If they notice burglaries in their neighborhood, like in this area right here, um, they can notify the sheriff's department of that suspicious pickup truck that was rolling through at 3:00 in the morning on the, the night of the burglary to that business. So, uh, this is the Raids Online tool, and, um, that's pretty much in a nutshell. And if I don't have any questions on that, I'll move right into the Attack Raids tool.
Go ahead.
Okay, hearing none. So this is Attack Raids, and Attack Raids is set up for the sheriff's department specifically. And so, um, this is gonna allow the sheriff's department access to their data. I just timed out real quick one second. So this is gonna take me back into where I was, but this is gonna allow the sheriff's department to have access to their data in a way that they don't currently have access to it. So it's gonna really drill down on all the necessary information with a crime. So here, I'm looking at data from Shawnee, Kansas, and you'll notice there's a lot of detailed information about the crime, uh, about the people information. So any people that are involved in the case, they'll be able to view that and query that, and I'll show you that in a second. Um, if there's vehicle information, it would be included on this tab. And if there's any narrative or notes, they can search through that in this tab and view that. And so, um, it's similar to the Raids Online. They can choose what incidents that they would like to see. So here, I'm gonna say, let's say we've had an uptick in burglaries. I'm gonna choose residential burglary, and I'll choose a date range of six months. So we'll have a nice, uh, population of data here. So similar to the Raids Online, they can do a density map and see the density of where these cases are occurring. Really interesting thing about that is this was kinda obvious in this area, but you can zoom in and recalculate that density. So from a police deployment standpoint, the sheriff doesn't have to deploy to this entire area. Now we're down to certain blocks that appear to have density, so it's a really nice little tool for looking at that. Um, as well, we have a number of different analytics that are available here. Um, a few different ones. We have a time comparison. I'll zoom out a little bit and show you how that would work. So the density map is gonna show you a time period, the last six months of where crime was most dense. But a time comparison will show you one time versus a, a different time. And so if we broke that six months into two, three-month periods and we calculate that, now the sheriff, sheriff's department is gonna be able to see where in the most recent three months the activity has been focused. And so we'll just go ahead and run that. And it's gonna show areas that are orange, meaning there's been an increase in the last three months, and areas that are blue or green showing there's been a decrease. So most of these events that happened in this area happened in the previous three-month time period. And these other areas are now starting to show the, the incidents that occurred in the most recent time period. As well, there's the option to do a prediction zone. The prediction zone will calculate, um, where you can likely see events that are occurring in the next week. So that's gonna be in these areas right here. And they can view an animated density over time. So if they wanted to look at periods of time and where crime has, um, where the density of crime has changed over periods of time, they can review that, and it'll show different changes in where crime has occurred over these time periods here at the bottom. So the, these are some of the analytical tools that they'll have access to, but some of the searching functions are over here in your data grid. So these are all the burglaries, and if they were interested in only those burglaries that occurred at single-family homes, they could filter that very quickly. And so instead of 50 burglaries now, it's gonna filter that information and get us down to 11. And so out of that, if you wanted to know how many of those happened at where there was a door entry, we can get that down. So serial offenders typically will use the same MO or modus operandi. And so for the, for the law enforcement agency, you wanna know what crimes are being committed by the same people or same group of people, and look for those patterns and series. And so now we're down to these four events that have a very similar MO, and they happen to be in the same general geographic area. And so now, the sheriff's department can focus on, um, trying to solve that crime, or these, this series of crime, and when the next crimes are gonna occur. I'm gonna bring back all the data real quick, just to show you what we offer in our analytics tab. And so when you go to the analytics now, it's gonna break that down into a number of different analytics that are gonna be helpful to the sheriff's department. So you have crime by beat, um, so this is showing those burglaries by the different police geography. police geography that are there, uh, time of day, I'm sorry, day of week, and this chart shows time of day and day of week together, as well as location types, you can push location types are being targeted. Um, and in here, I have point of entry here as well, so you can see the front door is the most, uh, frequently, um, used point of entry for offenders for burglaries in Shawnee, Kansas, is what we're looking at right now. Um, so, few other details here, uh, you can set up a report, and so you can set that report up, you can schedule an email with that report, or have it be a one-time report, I'll just show you how that's gonna look real quick. We'll go ahead and finish that. That's gonna crank away in the background and generate a report, and this report, as I said before, can be scheduled and emailed on a regular basis to whomever. And so, people wouldn't even have to go into the system, but a sergeant could send it to their whole unit, so they could see that on a Monday morning, or, you know, Friday or whatever, when their shift, uh, starts up again. And so it's gonna have this information, whatever was available in that analytics tab is gonna be avail-, available now in this report. And so the other thing that they can do is they can save dashboards, and so I've saved a number of different dashboards, and what that will do is allow them at any given time to zoom into a different area and view crime in that area with the different parameters that they've selected. So right now, I just saved a dashboard previously, and I've zoomed into Sacramento, California, to look at their call for service data, which is a little bit different than crime data, this is gonna be when anybody calls the police to report a crime. So that's available as well. Likewise, if, uh, the, let's say, um, the Sheriff's Office has a need, they can draw their own polygon on the map, so if, you know, the commissioners, if you guys decide that there's an area that you'd like attention to be focused, then they can designate that particular area, and then whatever analytics they have are gonna run against that particular area that has been selected. That's about nine minutes worth, and I was told I had ten, and we lost a minute or two in the front, so, that's pretty much all I, all I have in this time period, unless you guys have questions, or you want me to go into a little deeper detail.
I think I'm good.
I think it's a great, great system, it's really, I mean, it looks like it would be helpful to you guys.
You said something about service, uh, so calls for service, I mean, is that something that we could track EMS stuff on that as well, or?
We can't touch, we don't have CAD. The city has the CAD.
Okay.
And so, un- unless the city wants to get into, and I'm hopeful, honestly, that, that they're interested in pursuing the same company and doing some of this crime mapping, whether they will or not, I don't know, that, honestly, when you look across the spectrum of, of cost on these things, this one is excellent, and it's sole source because it's with our provider right now.
And I, and I don't think this would be an issue, uh, for, for this company to contact EMS to see what system it is, 'cause it's very possible they can bring in the information they're doing and come up with the same map, and actually integrate it with all, I mean, I, I don't see how that would, technically, you know, it'd have, we'd have to talk to the, the whizzes there, but I, I don't see how that would be an issue, 'cause they work with anybody.
I mean, it just seems like, you know, if, if we're looking at that stuff, you know, it, that comes into play for where are most of their calls going, and, and where do we station, you know, in the future, if, if we need to station another ambulance, or whatever.
And if there's a good way to piggyback that with ours, so we've got one cost county-wide, I'm good with that, too.
I'm not sure what they use, they've got something they use, because that's how he designates times and where they're stationed at.
I think, yeah, I think you use, I don't know.
So maybe we should look at trying to put them together if we can.
And, I mean, as far as that goes, uh, this is something that I think we should approach, uh, the county fires with, you know, that, that, I can't say it, but it's nothing but helping, really.
We can't, you, you know, we're, we're here because we know that it will work for us. Uh, Joe, are you still online?
I am.
Do you, this is, this is Greg White, Cole County Sheriff, uh, do you, do, uh, do you do this with ambulance and fire calls as well?
Uh, we have yet to partner with fire, however, we do have several different fire departments that are interested in coming online, so we're talking about what changes would be necessary, because right now, we're basically equipped to handle police calls for service, and so we just have to make a few edits to the application to be able to handle fire calls, 'cause that's not really our area of expertise, but we're certainly willing to learn and include that in the application.
If we were interested in exploring it, particularly with our emergency medical services, since that's a county-wide department as well, would you be interested in working with us on that?
Absolutely.
We've done some of that geographic tracking already.
Yeah.
With the ambulance service, where we've taken any month's worth of calls, I don't know, a year, three years' worth of calls, something like that, and put it all into the GIS system.
Well, and when you can do this real-time, anytime you want, it's huge.
I agree. What's the bottom line?
You wanna go ahead, since Mike and I are not here to start in the room?
Yeah. That's how we do these things, we just go right to the bottom line.
Proposal here is like, just, John says, remember the money. Um, the proposal has two sections, so the top section is the raids online, the free thing, which basically the cost there would be our interface maintenance, was $500. They're giving theirs for free, we're giving ours for free.
Okay.
But that's that first thing he showed for the citizens only. The second part is the attack raid, which is the analysis thing that Sheriff talked about.
Which is what we really need.
And, yeah, that's what we, that's what we'd like to have. So there's two parts, there's the first-year cost, which is the thirty-three-fifty. What we're doing here is we're offering our interface, and these folks are offering theirs at half price, because you're our first customer, okay? We wanna do this to our first customer, whether you are or not, our first customer, it'll be half price to the one of them. So that's why it's, the first year there is thirty-three-fifty. The second year is the forty-seven-hundred dollars, the second year and beyond, so every year you have that, that cost for this.
It's reoccurring.
And what's, I mean, what's, I hate to go down the line on it, but what happens if we decide to terminate? Just say no, and that's the end of it?
It's a one-year contract.
It's a, it's an annual appropriation contract?
And, and Joe confirmed that on the hearing as well, is it one year?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question.
One-year contract, is that correct?
Uh, yes, yes, and so you could cancel at the end of that year. Um, one thing that I failed to mention is that, that anyone that the sheriff wanted to on his staff would have access to attack raids. So any deputies out on the street, any detective could have access to the tools that I've showed you with attack raids, so it's a, it's a huge value, and so it's called a software as a service plan, that's why there's the yearly subscription, um, because it's open to the entire department.
And, and Joe, if, if, as we progress with this, doing, doing a test, could, and if you can work out the software where we'd work with the, the ambulance service, that's part of our, our county as well, on this first year, can we just roll that in, if you can get it up and running, to see how it works and use it as a marketing tool for others?
Yeah, I mean, there might be some initial cost to get the actual data in there, um, but yeah, in terms of using attack raids, if we can get that source in there for you, and, you know, that cost would probably be limited, because there's a benefit for us for getting fire or EMS in there as well. So, um, once we get that data in there, then yeah, absolutely, then, you know.
So other than data conversion?
Okay.
How do we, uh, I mean, I'm good with this, uh, I'm just wondering how we, I mean, we're almost mid-year, so, do we, I mean-
It's twelve months, it's a twelve-month contract, we either, you know, we budget for it next year, or we don't.
Be renewed next June.
But how do we, I mean, we can do that with, with the different budget years?
As long as it's a year-long, 'cause we'll pay it, and we'll just, you pay it upfront, and they will have the service for a year.
Okay.
Jeff?
I'm sorry, was that for me?
No, yeah, I'm sorry, we have another, our Eastern District Commissioner is Jeff also.
He was waking me up.
Okay.
I don't know, I had a question a second ago, and I lost my train of thought, saw something shiny.
Squirrel.
I don't know what it was, but, I mean, I think it's a good program, I think we can try it for a year and see what happens.
And you're gonna pay this out of civil, is that right?
This, this year I'll pay it out of civil, and if it works straight, then we'll negotiate it next year.
Put it in the budget?
Yeah. And particularly if we can roll EMS in with this, and as we can county fire, I think that'd be great.
So, what do you need from us?
Uh, your approval and a signature.
What is, uh, can we do this with our own GIS? Like, the ambulance is doing, is what?
Not like this.
You remember what the gigantic pain of what that was to get that put together, too?
Yeah.
Melissa did a great job, but it took a long time to even put the first map together.
And this is real-time, as you need it?
'Cause this is logged real-time?
Well-
So when you type in an accident report, it automatically populates the system?
Well, it, I think we talked about that, there has to be a, we would, we would come up with a time, it would probably be a daily deal, so, you know, at-
A data dump?
Yeah, at 1:00 AM, it would dump the prior day's reports into the system, something like that.
And what Mike gotta do is print them all out, and then Melissa enter them all.
Which is not the way to do data conversion.
Well, that's what I was trying to remember, how we did that.
'Cause we didn't have the, we don't have, Mike's system wasn't set up to do it any other way.
'Cause I don't, you know, I don't think we're doing our job if we don't look at the other options as well. I think it's a neat program, yes.
I think it's worth trying for a year.
I just texted Jill our account about it, that's even something we can use on the public side, and let our guys know, 'cause they're usually out in the rural areas during the day, and at work, we can say, hey, you see a suspicious vehicle out here, oh man.
Good partnerships.
Yeah.
I like it.
I'm good.
Put badges on the public works guys, and give them a gun?
I don't know, I don't know.
So we gotta approve the contract, or?
Then we'd have your presence everywhere.
You got a contractor?
We do. Actually, I'm just, you've got it right there.
I think that's a good idea, though.
I mean, I'm fine with approving it for one year, and then we'll just, since it's, it can be canceled at any time.
Do the one-year thing and see what happens with it.
Yeah.
I don't, it says, uh, what's option one and option two?
Uh, option one was just the-
That was the free thing.
Yeah, with just the raids.
That's just the-
The other one's the attack raids.
Citizen one.
Okay.
Indicate option two is the one that's the paid.
Or the, the raid one.
We're not large enough to justify the third one.
Well, I mean, it just doesn't, it says option, indicate option one or option two, there's nothing on here called option one or option two on the, on the form, that's why I asked.
Rodney's help. Is, uh, option one.
Uh, okay, I see. Okay, I'm good with that.
We're not gonna have anything else come up that says we have to have some kind of computer program added, or anything, no surprises.
We, we're already within Interpol, and it works within Interpol, so.
Okay.
We're good.
I mean, I think it's relatively inexpensive, too, for-
Well, and as soon as, as soon as we get to the point, as soon as it's all set up for us, and we're on board, running with it, we'd like to do a press conference on it with you guys, and show what we can do on the-
Is there anybody else that offers this type of system?
Not that works with them, and they're the people-
That works with you.
With Interpol.
So this would be a, effectively a sole-source option?
Yes.
It's forty-seven-hundred dollars, that's why I ask.
If it was forty-four ninety-five.
We wouldn't have to ask that question. All right, I entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Huberman Associates for one-year period.
So I'm in.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. Our roll call votes approved. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Excited to see how this works, and look forward to seeing it get expanded.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Sheriff, thanks for mentioning it.
Thank you very much.
Nice, quick presentation, with Mike.
Thanks very much.
See you doing that in real time, we'll need to-
Yes. And you're in that webinar stuff? Yeah.
So, so will this be turned on tomorrow?
All right, everyone.
It'll be turned on tomorrow.
Right, tomorrow, right?
I'm just putting the date on it.
Okay, we got one more item we gotta do here, guys.
So, the next and last item on the agenda is contract with Missouri Department of Transportation.
Yeah.
And I circulated to you guys, um-
Yeah, I looked at that briefly.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. If we're gonna do this, must do this, as long as we want it wrapped up.
I got, my, my time is flying here, I gotta be somewhere at nine, so I'm trying to-
Yeah.
You guys need to negotiate and discuss things. Out there is the place to negotiate and discuss.
Let me watch your chat.
Did you get mine, Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
He's gonna need to take it with him.
Okay, so, contract with Missouri Department of Transportation, um, I gave you guys a copy of this, it's pretty similar to what you've seen before, this is kinda the final, final version. Um, the total cost, base bid is one point, a little less than 1.4 million, we've got it down. A lot of that's 'cause of MoDOT has contributed a lot of in-kind things to help us push the cost down. Um, the actual amount that we'll have to deposit with MoDOT in July, which is when the deposit would be required, will be 1.313250. It's not on any of these forms, but that's because these forms include the design cost, and what MoDOT has requested, and the contract says that we contract directly with Arc Juris to do the design, and pay them through a separate contract, the design fees are a hundred and four thousand.
And we already said we would pay the million, so if the city passed through, we'll be on the hook for the other 3.13.
Yes, yes.
So, which I think we just need to go through with it, and I would hope that the city would be on board with it.
And Randy has graciously agreed to go down Monday, along with Russ and Chris, to present this to the city council. Um, he came up today just to kinda get an ear for what we're at on it, and I think we're pretty committed to it. Um, we do have a draft contract with MoDOT, it's been sent to them, subject to their general council's approval. Uh, so what I would suggest we do is we vote to approve that draft contract, uh, subject to their general council's approval, and if there are substantive changes, we bring it back.
You got all that into motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Um, I'll second, um, but that draft that you circulated, and you and Jill were kinda corresponding on, I mean, did, did we come to a comfortable agreement on some of that language, or?
We revised it, I revised it, and sent it to Mark, and he said he did some other things.
I took out, basically, the only language that I did, separate from what Jill proposed, was, um, I took out all the language relating to overruns and underruns. Um, the whole per, the whole discussion of this project has been, we were gonna deposit a sum of money, and that, and we were doing that. And the over, the overrun and underrun language, there's no way to track that-
Mm-hmm.
'Cause it's going into the pro, the entire project. Um, I don't wanna be on the hook potentially for more.
Right.
So, I'm willing to give up the unlikely event that we might get a check back, because they're willing to give us another half million-
In-kind.
In, in-kind into it. I would just assume, say, here's our lump sum, we're done, because if we keep the underrun in, but we say no on the overrun, I know exactly what their general council's gonna come back and say, is, no, you want the underrun, you gotta have the overrun.
And I would, too.
I don't blame them for that.
What's, what's the general, I mean, of course, a lot of it comes down to whatever the engineer's estimate comes on this project, I mean, if- the engineer's estimate comes on this project, I mean, if.
This is the engineer's estimate.
Well, but, but a lot of it, I think, comes down to the total project for MoDOT, too, because if they, if they're way over budget, then they're going to nix any extras for us, right?
Well, we will get all the base.
Okay.
Okay, what we would not get are these extra three alternates, if they're over.
Okay.
So the way, the way the agreement works is, by including the alternates, we get the base bid done, because we're paying for it. Any savings on the entire contract, the entire 18, it's going to be an 18-point, 16.9 plus 1.3, what is that? 18.2 million-dollar contract. Any savings under the 18.2, they, these are the order in which it'll be applied.
Okay.
Alt-A, Alt-B, Alt-C. If MoDOT comes up with other alternatives, they will be D, E, and F, so we actually will place ahead of any alternatives MoDOT comes up with.
Is that, what, I mean, does MoDOT typically overestimate most of their stuff, are they right on, I mean, I'm sure that they have a.
Yeah, I think they've been.
They're usually, usually.
They've been doing pretty good lately, because the contractors have been on it. This is the last big project.
And the.
Have they been letting much stuff?
Not big ones.
The Highway 50 thing was substantially under.
And it, yeah, the Highway 51 was $6 million under.
That's, that's the Luce Creek.
Yeah, on a 24, 24 million, does that sound right?
Yeah.
And it ended up at 18.
I mean, just, I haven't seen a whole lot of MoDOT work being let, I mean, some overlaying, a few bridge work, a few bridge jobs, but not, nothing, nothing substantial.
The contracts, prices on the contracts are starting to come up, we've seen that, but it's just because the economy started slowly, it's hard to, MoDOT tracks that very well, in fact, we use them a lot when we're together, our.
The press isn't here, but I will tell you that my guess is Arc Juris is overestimating this, from my experience, I mean, I just, it's, so I think it's, what he had here is pretty easily attainable, and pretty easily estimatable, so I, again, I don't know, I mean, I think this is a good plan.
I mean, I, I really, for that area, to dress up that area of Jefferson City and Cole County, I mean, it really needs a little help.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, it could, it could really help revitalize that whole area, especially with that church going in over there off of Lafayette and, and, you know, Lincoln University, hopefully maybe taking a proactive approach there, so, you know, as.
You don't want something on the west side, aren't you now?
Huh? I'm getting that right now.
All, all along, too, the concept here has been, if this works and it's successful, that the concept is to do gateways north, south, east, well, we can't do north, south, and east, and west also. This one's just a unique opportunity, because we get a blank slate, we get a blank slate to work off of, instead of having to work with what's already there.
Exactly.
And if the sales tax passes, could be some more neat projects coming in this area, no lack of things we need.
Now, is this, are we just looking at the Jackson Street and Lafayette, I mean, is that the basic?
It's Jackson, Chestnut, Lafayette.
Okay, okay.
Because they're taking all that out. So basically, everything from Monroe Street to Clark Avenue is going to be completely destroyed and completely rebuilt.
But do we think that, so we're talking about the Clark, Clark Street Bridge, too?
No.
No.
They're keeping that one.
Okay.
They're not taking it out.
There's some potential future work on that, and that's why I think they're not.
Chestnut. Chestnut's going to be redone, though?
So if you turn to this third page here, that's, that's Jackson, that's Chestnut, and then that's Lafayette in the base.
Mm-hmm.
And if we get everything, and it comes out, you know, low and behold, we actually hit the, we get this. Which makes a pretty sweet deal for a person.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I hate to see one done and not all three, I mean, just seem kind of silly, but.
Well, that's why we went with this base bid being, being the two overbridges being completely done, basically completely done, and the Lafayette Bridge just having the railing.
Mm-hmm.
It's interesting that, like, one of the most expensive alternatives is just to add these light sticks, because that bridge is so long. If it was a shorter bridge, it would be easier to do.
I'm good.
We already had a motion.
Got a motion second, a call roll, please.
Chris.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Our roll call vote, motion carries, contract, as long as it's not substantive altered, is approved, and we'll move forward. Randy, does that give you enough for tomorrow, or for?
Yeah, and Chris, just to follow up on our conversation, I think, you know, you would open it up, tell them what the county's doing, call on Russ, and then I'll add my two cents at the end.
Okay.
Thanks for going down there, too.
No problem.
We got ballgames.
Yeah, 10 minutes, I'll keep it short and brief. We need your money.
If the game gets rung out or something, I'll make some money. Be a little different if it wasn't districts.
Yeah.
If it was just a game, but.